Set the clock, call beating to order. Roll call please.
Ms. Beers?
Here.
Mr. Bennet?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Trossi?
Here.
Mr. Custer?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Ms. Lugo?
Here.
Mr. Staborski?
Here.
Mr. Velasquez?
Here.
All right, item three, like to request approval of the meeting minutes for the Finance Committee meeting, School Board work session, School Board meeting, and the special voting meeting.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
Up next, we have student representative addresses. Cambridge Springs High School.
Hi, my name is Elle Moran and I am updating you on what's happening at Cambridge Springs. Oh, my bad guys. Starting off with the news from the elementary school. The following news is reported from several CSES teachers. Mrs. Goldsmith's sixth grade students have been working on a memoir newspaper that they would like to share with the board members. They are still editing but would have the final copy by the next, by the end of next week. Mrs. Martinez's third graders are excited to start fractions in math. They will be learning about equal parts, equivalent fractions, and measuring. Also, the third graders have been publishing their informal writings. They're very proud of their intense work that they did. Mrs. Jardina's fifth grade students welcome, created a welcome book for new students after completing the journalism unit in November. The book is published and located in the elementary school office for new families that come to our school. Fifth graders also recently submitted haiku poetry in the 30th edition of the Young American Poetry Digest. The annual book features poetry written by elementary students nationwide. Each, each student's poem is reviewed by a panel of teachers and those selected for their overall quality will be published. Good luck, CSES students. CSES teachers recently participated in a data deep dive focused on students participating in read, participating in read in Math 180, interviews during their win time. Elementary Blue Devils data was strong and indicated students are making significant gains and demonstrating notable strength. Now for news from the high school. Congratulations to senior Parker Smith for earning 1,000 career points in basketball this past week. And congratulations to the team for recent wins against Eisenhower and Union City. They play Sagertown tomorrow in what's sure to be an exciting match. The girls' basketball team is playing Union City tonight away and we wish them good luck. Congratulations to senior wrestler Brody Beck for 100 wins. And congratulations to Sagertown wrestlers Casey Mook and Alora Dingeling, sorry, Dylan?
Dillinger.
Dillinger, I'm so sorry, on their recent 50 wins. Penncrest certainly has many talented athletes. Recently, Mariah Peterman, Josh Simpson, Will Marcia, DeMarco Green, and Kayla Crawford had a great showing and concert at District Chorus in Allegheny College. A special congratulations to Josh Simpson, who placed ninth in his section and is advancing to Region Chorus in Oil City in March. This Wednesday, we'll be publishing the Valentine's edition of the Pitchfork. Please continue to keep up with our special media, Cambridge Beaks, to see what is happening in Cambridge Springs Daily. We appreciate your involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.[404.56]
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The poll's safe. Motion carried.
Item G, recycling and sale of technology equipment. Resolve, Pencrest Board of School Directors approve the attached quote for sale and recycling of district technology equipment in accordance with policy seven zero six.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any comments or questions? Carried done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The poll's safe. Motion carried.
Item H, resolve, the Pencrest Board of School Directors approve the attached affiliation agreement with associates and counseling child guidance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to the second, any comments or questions? Carried done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The poll's safe. Motion carried.
Item I, resolve, the Pencrest Board of School Directors approve the attached Marykey, Pennsylvania Therapeutic Family Care and Foster Care Plus Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to the second, any comments or questions? Carried done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The poll's safe. Motion carried.
Item J is informational, just so the board knows, we did switch around with January twentieth and twenty-first date that some of you had questions with, so that has been fixed. We will have it for board vote at next month's board meeting. Also, there is a typo for the Thanksgiving break. It says November twenty-second to December second, but it won't be November twenty-seventh to December second. As much as I'm sure everybody would like an extra week off, we will not be doing it. Item K, resolve that the Pencrest Board of School Directors approve and accept a donation of kindergarten safety resource materials from State Representative Kathy Rapp.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to the second, any comments or questions? Carried done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The poll's safe. Motion carried.
Thank you. I have copies of what her office has donated that I can leave here for you folks to take a look at. But again, we just, we want to thank Representative Rapp for reaching out and offering these to our students. They deal with fire safety, school bus safety activities, supporting our local police for our younger kids when they come in. So it's a great way to start with those kids with safety and those items at that young age, and we appreciate Representative Rapp's help with that. On to section seven. Item A, resolve that the Pencrest Board of School Directors approve the list of contracted student drivers, student transportation drivers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to the second, any comments or questions? Carried done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The poll's safe. Motion carried.
Section eight, financial report. Item A, resolve that the Pencrest Board of School Directors approve the attached treasures reports.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to the second, any comments or questions? Carried done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The poll's safe. Motion carried.
Item B, resolve that the Pencrest Board of School Directors approve the payment of the attached disbursements with the funds listed below.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to the second, any comments or questions? Carried done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The poll's safe. Motion carried.
Item C, budget transfers. Resolve that the Pencrest Board of School Directors approve the attached budget transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to the second, any comments or questions? Carried done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The poll's safe. Motion carried.
Item D, resolve that the Pencrest Board of School Directors approve the attached Northwest Tri-County IU five CW CBET transportation trips for twenty-three, twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to the second, any comments or questions? Carried done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The poll's safe. Motion carried.
Item E, resolve that the Pencrest Board of School Directors approve the resolution to change the purpose of the twenty-twenty bond issuance to include renovations and upgrades to the Cambridge Springs attendance area.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to the second, any comments or questions?
Just so it's like clear to the public, can you kind of say exactly, I mean, it sort of says what we're doing here, but...
So this was originally the bond for the roofs that was slated in twenty-twenty that goes out twenty-five years. So what we are doing with that is we are going to reallocate that so we can change the funds from just the roof and open that up to the Cambridge attendance project. So we're looking at doing the roof as well at the elementary school, which hasn't been approved yet. We're looking at doing the bathrooms, locker renovations, piping, as far as plumbing and all that in the locker rooms, all the bathrooms, all that's included. Anything that is, has a useful life of twenty years. I apologize, I can't get it to pull up because we get, we have error message right now on the board docs. So I don't have the exact items in front of me. But we'll have more items as well. We did that walkthrough with the board, so there are more items identified for the Cambridge attendance area. But the bond resolution just changes those funds from that original issue that was that twenty-five years that has us locked in only for the roof. And if you remember in the past, we did the roofs with the ESRS money, so that's how we have that extra money to put towards the Cambridge attendance area. Yeah, good? Any other questions?
Any other comments or questions? Carried done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The poll's safe. Motion carried.
Personnel report.
No donations, donations.
Sorry, I missed one. Item F, for the MES nurse. Resolve that the Pencrest Board of School Directors approve to accept a donation of two hundred dollars from Townville Alliance Club for MES nurse.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to the second, any comments or questions? Carried done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The poll's safe. Motion carried.
Thank you. Again, we would like to thank the Townville Alliance Club. They annually donate to the schools out there, and we appreciate their community partnership. Now, sorry, on to the personnel report. Would the board consider a consent agenda on this?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, so I'd like to request approval as a consent agenda for all the items on the personnel report, item A through G.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to the second, any comments or questions? Carried done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The poll's safe. Motion carried.
Okay, item ten is listed as new business. Again, it's the policy first reading for policies listed six, ten, and zero, zero, six. On next to any board discussion for new business items? All right, for announcements, first we are announcing that the board met for executive session on January twenty-third, February fifth, and the twelfth for personnel legal and negotiations. Next item I have is some district announcements that we'd like to share with you. First up, some of the recent legislation affecting public schools for the board's knowledge. Their PDE has, there's a new student teacher grant opportunity to attract, that is being used to attract more people to the field of public education. It's a grant for student teachers to receive funds while they student teach, and it'll be through the PHEAA. That's a new item that came with the recent legislation, which hopefully will help build a pipeline of teachers. Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, what you'll hear us say all the time will be PCCD. There are multiple grants out currently and training as to how to fill out the applications. Some of those grants are competitive. We are currently working on completing those applications. They are due at the end of the month. There's mental health, there's school safety, and there's a larger competitive grant out there also. So we will be turning those applications in to get funding for a lot of the things we have, we've gotten funding through before for PCCD and through ESRS, so those will be coming our way as well. A piece that's effective today, February twelfth, that was added to the recent omnibus bill of, from the Department of Ed. All school late children must be given a dental screening upon original entry into school while in third grade and seventh grade. And as always, guidance will be brought out to the schools at a later date, but that, that was an addition that became effective actually today. So our schools will be making sure that happens to be in line with code. There are certain revised dual credit rules and data reporting required by schools that will come about in June. Again, we will be working on that to ensure that we meet those requirements. And the last piece, major piece of note is the basic education circulars, that's how PDE puts out their regulations and rules. They adjusted the days and hours of instruction rule. In the past, it said all students must receive one hundred eighty days and nine hundred hours at the elementary level and nine hundred ninety hours of instruction at the secondary level. They changed the wording, effective immediately, to all students must receive one hundred eighty days or nine hundred or nine ninety hours of required instruction. So there's an either or in there now. In the past, we had to make sure kids were here every, all one hundred eighty days, and we also had to make sure that we had those nine hundred or nine hundred ninety hours of instruction in order to be in compliance with state funding. If we didn't meet those in the past, basically PDE pulls back some of your funding. So there's going to be a little wiggle room for us to do things, like should we have, you know, major snowstorms or things like that, or we need to do additional professional development days. There'll be a little more leeway for us to do things and still meet our funding requirements. We, superintendents in the county will be getting together and talking about how we're going to address that too, so that again, our professional development days can try a match with our calendars, so again, we don't affect our career technical kids. But that's some things that may be coming to you later. And again, the board always approves the school calendars, so none of these changes will be made without the board approving it. But that was one of the big changes that kind of surprised everybody. Currently, there's legislation being considered now. House Bill fourteen twenty-two addresses excessive cyber charter school costs, and hopefully will address fairly charging taxpayers for school choice. Some of the facts that we've been asked to share with the school and the community is the project, the projected cost savings or mitigation for Pencrest School District based on this legislation will be about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. What it'll do, some of the things that it does that is not out there now, create more openness as to what taxpayer dollars are spent on, such as advertising, sponsorships, charter school foundations and governance. A lot of that stuff does not require, doesn't have much oversight, and taxpayers aren't informed that the dollars that fund those are being used for those things. It will require these, the cyber charters to do a residency verification for enrollment. Sometimes that comes into question, and that has been required before. It also requires cyber charters to visibly see and communicate with enrolled students at least once per week to verify their well-being, something that we do a lot more than once per week in the brick and mortar schools. The other pieces that'll, in the bill, again, this is just proposed now, it's not been voted on by the legislature. It will require schools to allow access to facilities for state testing for the cyber charters, since they don't have facilities, so that's something that'll affect our facilities for state testing. We'll have to provide access. Some transportation items that they're still working out on. And, you know, those are the major highlights. I shared with you some of the administrative costs that are public on, on the internet for some of these cyber charter schools. Eighty, the three that I was able to find online, eighty percent of our outside, our students that go to outside cyber schools attend those three cyber charters. Some of these cyber charters have fifteen, twenty administrators, assistant principals, and no buildings, as well as CEOs making two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So that's what this House Bill fourteen twenty-two, they're trying to address. But they're also trying to fairly address school choice for parents because it's not meant to eliminate school choice. It's, it's meant to eliminate some of the burden on taxpayers for providing school choice. That's the way it's, you know, being sold, but again, it'll go through legislative process. It's been on the table a couple of times in the past and it's died, so we're hopeful something moves forward, but I wanted to share that with everyone because it's making a little bit of progress. And then now finally into our district announcements. Again, our, our students did some wonderful presentations this evening. We doubled up on some of the stuff they said, but I have our board statement to the community right now here for you. I'll read out. So, "The Pencrest School District is very proud of our students and staff's achievements and efforts. The following items are just a sampling of the many things that helped make Pencrest a great, positive educational community. Please visit each school's website or official social media sites for updates and happenings throughout our district community. First, multiple Pencrest students performed well in district course at Allegheny College. Mariah Peterman, Josh Simpson, ninth place, Will Marcel, DeMarco Green, Kana Crawford, Cindy Preston, Laura Slagle, Aiden Chomovik, Lily Oakes, Travis Peters, second place, Kylie Reynolds, and Jasmine Sample. They all represented Pencrest School District with honor. We appreciate their efforts and their achievements." From Cambridge Springs Schools, "In the classroom, hands-on STEM activities included Mrs. Jardina's science classes dissecting earthworms and crayfish, as well as Mr. Crocker's physics students engineering towers and testing the strength of their creations." Congratulations again to Cambridge Springs senior Parker Smith for reaching a one thousand point scoring milestone in basketball recently. From Maplewood Schools, Maplewood High School recently completed its annual business week with the top company being the Essentialins. This is always a great week for students to learn about entrepreneurship and leadership. Thank you to the many community volunteers for making the event successful for our school and our students. To the students and teachers at Maplewood that participated in the Unified Bocce team, also, we thank you for providing this amazing opportunity to see you perform in the bocce competitions. From Sagertown Schools, Sagertown Elementary School celebrated the hundredth day of school recently with building-like classroom activities. Also, thank you to Mrs. Mook and Mrs. Slayton, as well as Ms. Eileen Mullen from the K-12 Education Alliance for planning and executing the mock interviews at Sagertown High School on Thursday, February eighth. The students did great work. It's exciting to see these students take a step into adulthood and work with area of business professionals. Cambridge Springs High School is scheduled for February twenty-ninth for the mock interviews. Additionally, Alora Dillinger, as noted earlier, notched her fiftieth career win in the girls' wrestling tournament recently at North Allegheny. At that same tournament, Emma Spencer placed first in her classification. And then also, Sagertown Boys varsity basketball team recently captured the region title last Friday. And a final note. Last week at Sagertown Elementary School, sensor caused an unplanned fire alarm for the building. The monthly drills in all buildings' practice was put into place, and the building was safely evacuated. The Sagertown Fire Department quickly dispatched and arrived at the building to check the building and clear for entry. We'd like to deeply thank the Sagertown Fire Department. We are grateful for our local fire departments and for being there when we need them. If you ever have a chance to support your local fire rescue, please do. This is a very important local service that you hope you never use, but we'll be grateful if you ever need them. Again, remember, please visit our school's website or official social media sites for even more updates and happenings throughout the district. Thank you. All right. Up next, we have registered citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Mr. DeFrancesco.
Thank you. I'm here again to talk about American. Can I start?
Yep.
I'm here again because I want to go over to, to speak about again, American civics in our schools. From what I understand, American civics were taught here years ago, and if I, if I'm correct, it was the Jardina, the teacher Jardina that was, that was appointed as a teacher for civics. And once she retired, all of a sudden, you know, boom, disappeared. Well, I have to remind the board again, as I did before, over and over again, American civic is the law. You people will have to find out, reinstitute the American civics in this district, not because you like or not, but because it's the law. Now, I was going to prepare a nice speech, but I found out an article from a teacher that was written last year. So I'd like to give the copy to the secretary. Hopefully, they should be able to copy it and distribute it to all board members.
Mr. Brown, would you please?
Thank you.
As the president of the union stated, the future of our children, the future of this country is a state, especially what's going on right now. If our young people do not know what, how valuable this country and the institution that we abide with, then this country is done. They're important people that'll never know the duty as a citizen or a guest. Unfortunately, we have millions of illegals. And I can tell you from personal experience that there is a law, immigration law, there should be a, that the federal government should make sure the people is enforced. My parents and I and all the family went through it. They had to be medical checked. We had us, we had to have a sponsor to take care of our family while my father find a job and to take care of his own family. But right now, it looks like the sponsor is the federal government, actually, to be specific, the Democratic Party in this country. And that has to stop. But people, the young people need to know, and you are responsible to reinstate the civics, American civics in this district. And please, let me save us a money because I don't want to file a mandamus against the board. Thank you.
Any comments from non-registered citizens on non-agenda items?
This is your quarter?
No, it's you, somebody.
All right.
Somebody tried to help.
Debbie Miller, Rockdale Township. Couple of things. First of all, I am so happy to hear that my alma mater and the place that I call home every day, teaching, is going to finally get some improvements. Might I make a suggestion? We all remember last year, the packed house here, that was concerned that this building was not going to get their turn to, and the elementary school, to get the improvements. Maybe it would be nice to run an article in the paper, something like that, to let this community know just what the board has landed on as a final decision on what things are going to be done. When I heard locker rooms, I like was so thrilled because that's that first thing, that a place, you know, that when they come in, that they see visiting schools. We host playoff games sometimes. And if we can have nice facilities there, if we can have a handicap accessible restroom in that gym area, that will be, that will be much thought of as a great improvement. Second thing I would like to say is, this is a suggestion as well to the board. It's really difficult to find where the policy meetings are being scheduled. They're kind of tucked away on the website under board things, and the education committee as well. As I spoke earlier, we want to work together, and if it wasn't for Mr. Brown and his good wife Debbie reminding the teachers of when those are, they're, they're kind of hard to find. So why not have every meeting, like, right on the front page of the board section or something, so that citizens who are interested or teachers or whatever can attend those? So that would just be a suggestion to put those there. And lastly, I'm probably not allowed to do this, but I would like to tell Mr. DeFrancesco that I'm not sure, but I hear the senior government class talking all the time about a, they do a whole citizens unit, and they have to pass the same citizens test that someone applying for citizenship does. So they, they study all of that. So if I could set you at ease a little bit, I believe we are teaching them about American civics. Thank you.
Got to respond to that? Any other citizens, non-agenda?
Carl Archak, Cambridge Springs Borough. I just want to echo what Mrs. Miller said. If you recall, just a year ago tonight, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, when we did pack this auditorium out of such concern of not only repairs, but maybe even not keeping this building open. I wish there was a full house here again tonight to hear that there is going to be some movement on those repairs, and I want to thank the diligence of the board for doing so. With that being said, if I can just add to, I hope that list also includes some plaster repairs on the hallway and a repainting down the road at some point as well, as I'm sure when you toured, you saw some of the decrepit walls and the conditions there. Because there's another thing that we really want to think about, besides the visiting teams, is think of the impressions of possible new parents and students coming in to see the facility right now. I know we're all concerned about lower enrollment. We want to try to turn that tide around, having a better facility. We realize we're a nineteen fifty-one building, and that's all right. No one's complaining about that, actually. But to see some of the joy, I think, that you'll see from the students, and then in an open house before the new year starts, when we can see the progress. So I again echo it. There could be some publication of that, and then a possible timeline, and anything else that we as the citizens could do to encourage that, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Carla Brown, I live in Cambridge Springs. My kids attend Sagertown. I wanted to speak a little bit and comment on Mr. DeFrancesco's comments a moment ago. And I come to offer solutions. His comments were nothing new. They were, they were quite often while he was a board member. So my solutions are some resources that maybe you could add to your list for next month. PAcivics.org, that has outreach programs, educational resources, contests, and competitions. And I just found this in two seconds, looking online. The United Unified Judicial System of Pennsylvania has civics outreach and education programs. PCNTV has civics one oh one, PA.gov has civics and government programs. Committee of Seventy has youth civics programs. Act Thirty-Five Civics Toolkit, Pennsylvania Department of Education website. Civics One Oh One Videos on Demand, another thing that PCNTV offers. The Pennsylvania Bar Association has civics LRE resources. PAForward.org, civics and social literacy. Better Civics is also a Commonwealth of Pennsylvania site that has lots of educational tools and things that you could look up. All these things could be very easily found and have been resources for a very long time within our school district if people would stop complaining and actually look for those things. The other thing that I would like to say is that maybe you should look at your own policies. The student representative, for example, there haven't been any student representatives for this board for a very long time, and I personally believe that no one applies for it because the policy is antiquated, outdated, it's biased, and students don't want to have to turn something into a principal. And students don't want to have to turn something into a principle before they come up and talk about what they want to say. Their student representatives right now are actually people from the news, so. Thank you very much.
Any additional citizens on non-agenda items?
Hello, Lauren Zorian Edwards. I go to Sagertown High School. I'm a senior. Right now, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not the press. I'm still wearing the shirt. I apologize. I wanted to take a moment. There have been some resignations recently. And I just wanted to take a moment and take a moment to appreciate Mr. Papencheck, who was the marching band director at Sagertown for many years. I was part of the marching band for five years, this year being my last, and he was the marching band teacher throughout that. He helped me through some hard times. He helped a lot of students through hard times. He helped us grow as students, grow as people, and grow as musicians. And I just want to thank him for everything he has done for this district. And I also want to ask you, what are you going to do now that you don't have a Sagertown marching band director? Because if you have Mr. Gardner, who is the band director at Maplewood and the band teacher at Sagertown now, are you going to have him direct two bands, or are you going to get another person to direct this band? Or are you going to have them combine? Or are you just going to let the band dissolve? That is a valid concern, concerning the shape of our music department in the past. It is getting better, but it's a valid concern. Another thing I wanted to bring up was I have stood, not here, mostly over there, talking about the teacher's contract and how we need one and how it is a critical part of our education at this point. I would like to thank you for finally settling that matter. However, I'm very sad that it took this long. I also want to kind of echo what Carla had to say about the policies. It was very clear on what was changed and what wasn't changed and the things that were the same, on how they were formatted in the past, and now it is very difficult to tell if you do not know the policy by heart. Also, I'm a high school senior. Government is a required class at Sagertown for juniors and has been for a long time, to my knowledge. I had an amazing government teacher last year. Sadly, he is no longer with the district, but I have taken... Sorry. I have taken that American entry test at least several times throughout my high school career. And I have a very good understanding of what local and state government are and America as a whole. And I feel that the teacher now is definitely doing that for our students. Thank you.
Any additional comments on non-agenda items? Is that two minutes up yet? Hearing done. Mr. Johnson?
Motion is adjourned. So moved.
Second.